Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will call to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
As for Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting?
Let's move by Counsel Cannon, seconded by Counsel Turner. The council resolved itself into Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting to consider the following items: A) Advice as subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, parking garages, 197 Brock Street, 266 Begit Street, and 105 Brock Street; and B) A proposed repending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, employment land, Katerakwe Estates.
Please vote. And that carries. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We were just meeting as a Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting. We were talking about parking garages and also a pending acquisition or disposition of land in the Katerakwe Estates. So with that, I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting.
Moved by Counsel Shell, seconded by Counsel Turner. That council rise from the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting without reporting.
Please vote. And that carries. Next, I'll ask for an approval of the added's. We have an additional delegation. We have a report from the Environment Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee, and we have a number of communications. Can I have a mover? Moved by Counsel Neal, seconded by Counsel Osannick. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counsel Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I Liz Shell of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 3, Report 49, options to not permit a casino gaming facility in Kingston as my son works for Ontario Lottery and Gaming. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel George.
Thank you, your worship. By Counsel, or Kevin George of the Council of the Corporation of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 3, Report Number 51, as my company has been retained for services by the applicant.
Okay. That was Clause 3, Report 51. Counselor Cannon.
Thank you. Through your worship, I Adam Cannon of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 2, Report Number 49, as my spouse is employed at Homebase Housing.
Counsel Allen.
Thank you, your worship. I Richard Allen of the Council of Corporation of City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 1 of Report 49, as there may be a perceived conflict as I am an employee of Queen's University.
Okay. Any others? All right. So, we have no presentations tonight, and so we will move directly to delegations. We have two delegations on the agenda tonight. Number one is Michael Fraser, Vice Principal, University Relations, and Tyrone, Vice Provost and Dean of Student Affairs, and Leslie Dalson, Executive Director, Athletics and Recreation, who will appear before council to speak to Clause 1, Report Number 49, received from the Chief Administrative Officer with respect to Queen's request for extension to temporary noise exemption, West Campus Sports Fields, and Richardson Stadium. Just a note to all of our delegations that you have five minutes.
Well, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. The introductions, I Mike Fraser, VP, University Relations, and Tyrone, who is Vice Provost and Dean of Student Affairs, Leslie Dalson, Executive Director of Athletics and Recreation. So we won't take up too much time, and we'll try to be brief. We just, we do feel it's important that we touch on our issue this evening for our request for an extension to our existing exemption to our noise bylaw. So, to start off, what this means, the present exemption allows in our north fields, on our west campus, for the allow game whistles, to allow limited amplified sound, play the National Anthem, and to make intermittent game announcements to a maximum of 93 games per year. The Richardson Stadium, much the same thing, although there's an exemption for music, up to a maximum of 15 games a year for Richardson Stadium. I should note that we're asking for the exemption with the exact same conditions as per the existing exemption. So those, those conditions revolve around how we work with the community, in terms of our communications, how we manage some of the complaints if we receive them, how we track them, and how we respond to them. Some of the recommendations also include how we report those conditions to the city. It also included our commitment to an engineering study on noise mitigation, which we delivered to the city at the end of December. I think it's important to note that we went beyond the conditions on, in several aspects in terms of mitigating sound. Leslie's done a lot of work in helping our groups to understand noise mitigation and the importance of keeping volume down on the field, but we've also worked very hard to reschedule much of the highest noise events back onto the main campus. We've also worked very hard to implement all the recommendations of the engineering sound study. That's listed under the additional actions that we've taken to mitigate some of the sounds. So the utilization of how we position the speakers on the north campus, on the north, northern fields, that requirement that anyone using our fields uses our sound system, which is calibrated for the lower sound volume, and where possible, where league rules will permit the use of lower volume whistles. How we've handled complaints as we've moved forward, we've set up a system as per some of the conditions asked of us of council last time for a dedicated website, a dedicated hotline that's manned by athletics. We respond to that dedicated phone line when we get complaints. To our knowledge, we haven't received complaints about the activities on the north sports fields during the time of the existing exemption. We have received complaints from a household in regard to the south fields, the Southgrass fields. Changes have been made. Leslie can speak to some of those mitigations that we've done to handle that complaint, and it's important to realize that's outside of the existing exemption. Nevertheless, we took those complaints seriously. We've done a number of, a number of things. The, the original complaint, I believe, was heard last August, and in response to that, we've done a number of items, including rescheduling some of the children's summer camps down to the main campus, some of the competitive soccer games. In return, Ultimate was moved up to that field. Ultimate requires no whistles or amplified music. I think, as I said, we wanted to be brief, but we did want to say that we have tried to take the approach over the last year to try to work through solutions with the community that allowed us to continue to play sports on the field, as we've done for several decades, in a way that is respectful and mindful of some of the concerns of the neighborhood. We think that's reflected in the complaint volume falling, and some of the community meetings we've had, the attendance in those meetings. No system is perfect, and we'd like to continue on, though, and respectfully ask for an exemption to continue for one more year with the same conditions as previous. And with that, Mayor, we'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Counsel Neil.
Thank you. It was pointed out to us from a, from a local person who lives nearby, that, and I remember this as being one of the mitigating measures that you had proposed last year with some signage, helping people, athletes, to know what the protocol was. As I understand it, according to the letter, and I haven't walked the site, but there's only a couple of signs up at this time, and that they're quite limited or small. I'm wondering if you could possibly put a more appropriately sized sign at each of the benches where the players actually, so that they, they indeed will see the signs? Is that a possibility?
Yes, thank you. We did post signs on all the fields last year. Unfortunately, they've become quite a little collector's item, so we're constantly replacing them, but certainly we'd have no issue with posting larger, different, different locations and things like that. Right now, I did have my facility staff check. We've got signs on all the fields, but I think we can, we can add signs and a little bit different size and content, probably.
Great. And my last question is regarding, that's a very nice information piece that you had there for, Protocol for Complaints. Is that being distributed in the, in the immediate neighborhood, or is that just an online bit of information?
No, we've done, I think, three letter drops to the neighborhood immediately surrounding the field, so, and it's been on all of our communication pieces as well.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I was just wondering if I could, and thank you for your presentation. Thanks for coming tonight, and thank you also for the meeting that we had a couple months ago. I really appreciated the opportunity to advocate on behalf of my constituents. Why is it exactly that amplified sound is so important to the sporting events in the first place, is my question?
Hi, thank you. Number one, we have to meet league obligations with regard to the way we present our games. National anthems are a standard, so we use the amplified sound for a national anthem, and also field, all of our field announcements. So basically, they're, they're required because of the way in which we have to present our games, based on our OUA, our, our league affiliations.
Thank you. And just to follow up, so to specify, is recorded music in between plays also league mandated?
We have an obligation under league rules to provide entertainment for our fans. We do that in a number of different ways. We run contests, we make, we make announcements that are required by the league, we have the band played, and we play amplified sound.
Although that exemption is only relevant to Richardson Stadium, not the North.
Yeah, yeah. There's, yeah, there's no, there's, other than the National Anthem, there's no recorded music that's played on the north field. It's just related to our football games.
Is there anybody else that has a question? Counsel Hutchison.
I've heard that the requirement was that if there was a complaint that went into Queen's, then Queen's would act on it, and then report it to the city. And I've heard that when people have phoned in, there wasn't anybody at the other end. And I was wondering if you had any comment about that, so that responses only followed the next day?
The, the methodology that we used is a, it's an electronic system, so as soon as there's a call that goes to the hotline, it sends an automatic email to a member of my staff, also included is a member of the city staff, so that technology sends that right away. Immediately, we dispatch someone to the field, and they go and check out what's going on. And then the next day, a member of my management team would follow up with the complainant around what the issue was and how we tried to resolve it. So it's, it's a new technology we use. It seems to be working fairly well. I'm on the list. I get the complaints right away as well. My manager of operations and facilities is immediately following up on that. Thank you.
Counsel Osannick.
Thank you, your worship. I think you had the hotline number on one of those slides. Can you just read it out? I just don't see it in the materials in front of us. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Counsel George.
Thank you, your worship. Just one thing that's got my curiosity up. I see that due to one complaint, you moved a great deal of your program, especially those related to the kids camp. What kind of disruption did this, if any, cause some of the parents that are associated with this program and taking their children to different locations and such, based on one complaint?
I think we did a number of things. We moved the location of the camp, so we were able to continue to offer the camp. We also changed drop-off locations. We also changed bus routes. So through communications, we were able to mitigate the, the impact to the camps and the parents. What we'll see this year is the result of that in terms of, in terms of registration. A little too early to tell, we're still in our open period right now.
I just hope it doesn't have a negative effect, because I'd far sooner see the children participating in camp rather than out looking to vent their, their built-up anxiety doing something else that they shouldn't be doing on the streets of Kingston.
Agreed. There was 90 participants in that camp last summer.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Our second delegation this evening is Don Chipley and Laurie Jurgens, who will appear before council to speak to Clause 1, Report Number 49, received from the Chief Administrative Officer with respect to Queen's request for extension to temporary noise exemption, West Campus Sports Fields, and Richardson Stadium.
Hi. I'm Don Chipley, and I'm here on behalf of my wife and some of the other residents of Young Street who live near the sports field south of the Richardson Stadium. I think you can see on there our house, 265 Young, and I've highlighted in red the two sports fields, and in green, the sports field north of Richardson Stadium. My wife and I, Laurie, we've lived on Young Street for 17 years, the past 15 at 265 Young Street, and it was a really quiet neighborhood until May of 2014. At this time, there was a huge increase in activity on the sports field south of Richardson Stadium, and it seemed that this especially occurred after the noise exemption on the north field came into effect. The activities were moved to the south field, included Kingston Football Club, often running from about 6:30 till 9:30 or 10:00 at night, and that was a couple of times a week. And in the fall, the Ultima Frisbee League was about 9:00 till 11:00 at night, and about four times a week. A lot of these activities were held on the field closest to homes. I don't have a pointer, so I can't show you, but you can see how close that field is to the homes. And we were told that this was more convenient for the organizers. Prior to May 2014, there were usually a few days a month in July and August when there were activities on these fields. And quite honestly, it was kind of enjoyable to hear kids having fun and playing. It was, it was really nice. July and August of 2014, it was five days per week and five to eight hours per day, and in one stretch, it was 10 days straight. Most of the activities involve yelling, shouting. Of course, this is not a problem for the noise bylaw, as long as it doesn't occur after 9:00 PM. And much of it did occur after 9:00 PM. Of course, honking of horns, people cheering for their team, tooting to say goodbye at night, despite being 11 o'clock at night, and huge increase of traffic on Stadium Lane, which runs along the, the west side of those fields. And Stadium Lane is about five meters from our backyard. As I, as I stated, many of the activities that were moved to the south field were causing noise complaints on the north field. And you can see the north field across Sir John A. or north across Johnson, how far those homes are from that field. And when you come to the south field, you can see how close those homes, our homes, are to that field. I can't understand, really, how moving those activities that were disturbing people in the north, around the north fields to the south fields, much closer to homes, could really demonstrate concern or consideration for the residents by Queen's. I, it just, I can't understand that. In fact, to me, it demonstrates a complete lack of concern. Calls to Queen's hotline, usually because things went beyond 9:00, which is when the noise bylaw says things should quiet down, did not result in any noise reduction or nothing we could notice, and games usually continued with noise until their scheduled shutdown time. And replies to our complaints the following day were usually, we didn't think it was too noisy. Only once did someone from Queen's come to our home to experience the noise, and that person did recognize the problem, but only once did someone from Queen's come to our home. I don't know where they went to listen, but it was not our home. In addition, calls to Kingston City Police were met with replies such as, "We're not to bother Queen's," and "We don't know where that is, we must have an address." I'm only glad it wasn't an emergency.
Thirty seconds.
In terms of being the only residents that complained, I've spoken to other residents at 285 and 293 Young Street, and they say that they've also complained. And I'd just like to say that it seems to me that Queen's are not really acting responsibly and should not be policing themselves in this matter of noise. And really, our, our whole avenue for complaint has been nullified.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counsel Neil.
It's been a while since I've been around the south field. Is, does it have lights?
Yes.
It does. And does Queen's keep the lights on past 9:00?
They're often turned on about 5:00 or 5:30 or 6:00, and they're on until 11:00, if games go till 11:00.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I'll speak to this later. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, so next, we, we do have one briefing this evening. Tina White, Senior Project Manager, Planning and Design, Ministry of Transportation, and a representative from MMM Group, will appear before council to present the preliminary design EA study results for both the Kingston Road 38 interchange and the Highway 15 interchange. Just to note that briefings, you have 10 minutes, and then if you can entertain questions after that.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm going to provide you with an overview of our environmental assessment studies for the Highway 401 interchanges at Kingston Road 38 and Highway 15. I'll provide you with an overview of our environmental assessment objectives. I'll review the study areas and the issues that they're experiencing. I'll give you a brief outline of the key tasks of the study. After that, I'll present the recommended strategies for each interchange, including the long-term technically preferred alternatives, our interim plans, and I'll discuss some of the key impacts at each interchange. I'll give you a brief overview of our consultation efforts, and I'll tell you about our next steps. Two locations, in the west Kingston Road 38 interchange, and in the east Highway 15. Our objectives are to identify long-term and interim solutions to address traffic operations issues that, that the interchanges are experiencing, to improve safety at the interchanges, and to deal with any of the structural needs of the bridges at each location. And ultimately, we plan on completing a class environmental assessment for each one and complete preliminary designs for each interchange. I won't get into detail on this, but these are some of the tasks that we've been looking at. We looked at the issues affecting each interchange. We developed a long list of alternatives. We screened that down to a short list of alternatives, which we presented to the public in February of last year. We then spent quite a bit of time evaluating the short list of alternatives, so that we can come to the best solution. In February of this year, we presented our preferred alternatives, and now we are working on the Transportation Environmental Study Report and preliminary design of the interchanges, and we hope to finish up the study later this summer. So I'll talk first about the Kingston Road 38 interchange. In terms of issues, today it's experiencing quite a bit of delay in queuing, particularly on the loop ramps, the off-ramps, and also northbound on Kingston Road 38 at the North Ramp Terminal. These are quite extensive queues during the peak hours. The fact that there's no dedicated left turn lanes at these locations seems to exacerbate those delays, and there is significant development planned to the south, and that is going to add to the problem in the long term. In terms of the rest of the interchange, the interchange ramps, the off-ramps have quite tight turning radius, turning radii at each one. The existing bridge is fairly old. It was built in about 1960. The carpool lot is pretty stressed. It's going to need improvements. In terms of the work that we did at Kingston Road 38, we developed a long list of alternatives, and we, we screened that down to about eight shortlist alternatives, and we evaluated those against a set of criteria that's pretty typical of an environmental assessment study. We looked at environmental features, including the natural environment, socioeconomic factors, cultural environment. We looked at transportation issues. How well did the alternatives address the traffic needs and safety needs? And was it easy to construct the alternative? We also looked at construction cost and property cost as part of the evaluation. We selected the alternative that we felt had the best balance of benefits and impacts, and I'll present those to you tonight. After that, we identified interim alternatives that would provide some short-term benefits, but at a minimum of throwaway when we go ahead and build the long-term alternatives. So with that, I'll present to you the long-term technically preferred alternative at Kingston Road 38. That's in the blue on the drawing. We will construct new, a new eastbound, or new eastbound on and off ramps in the southwest quadrant of the interchange. That will improve traffic operations, and it'll improve traffic safety. We will enlarge the existing loop ramp in the northwest quadrant. Again, that'll improve safety, and it'll improve traffic operations, and that will line up with MacGyver Road in the north. We will provide dedicated left turn lanes, two dedicated left turn lanes at the North Ramp Terminal. That'll improve the capacity of that movement. We'll construct a new bridge to the west of the existing bridge and demolish the existing bridge. We will need to widen the westbound Highway 401 bridge at Collins Creek. We will provide a larger and relocated carpool lot in the southeast quadrant of the interchange. And that, I think, is all of the Kingston Road 38 improvements in the long term. In the interim, we'll be doing most of those same improvements, with the exception of replacing the bridge and building the new loop ramp in the southwest quadrant. So we'll do most of the improvements for that interchange in the interim. In terms of impacts, there will be some private property impacts in the northwest quadrant. There'll be some impacts to the woodlot in the southwest quadrant, and those are the, I apologize, the key impacts at the Kingston Road 38 interchange. So I'll talk now about the Highway 15 interchange. In terms of issues today, we have extensive queuing northbound on Highway 15 at the North Ramp Terminal because of the high volume of left-turning traffic, and we have extensive queuing on the eastbound 401 off-ramp. Again, there's a lack of dedicated left turn lanes at the North Ramp Terminal, and that seems to increase the delay. At the two on-ramps, there's a very short merging length at each location. The existing bridge is fairly old. It was built in 1953. Similar to the Kingston Road 38 interchange, we started with a long list of alternative. We screened the Highway 15 alternatives down to 12 shortlisted alternatives, and we evaluated that similarly to Kingston Road 38 interchange. And we came up with this as the long-term preferred alternative. It's quite a significant change from the existing interchange. We will, in the northeast quadrant, will construct a new loop ramp and relocate the existing westbound off-ramp. That will greatly increase the capacity of traffic that's coming from south, from Highway 15 on to the westbound 401. 15 on to the westbound 401. We will widen the eastbound 401 off-ramp to improve capacity of that ramp. We will construct a new bridge over Highway 401 west of the existing bridge. We'll demolish the existing bridge. And we will, for the South Ramp Terminal, increase the merging distance for traffic going north and southbound to improve safety. In the interim, fairly minor improvements in terms of the footprint. We will realign the, or we will widen the existing eastbound Highway 401 off-ramp, and we will realign the existing westbound off-ramp to join with the current on-ramp and create a single intersection, and we will signalize that intersection, and that should improve safety and traffic operations there. In terms of impacts, we've got a private property in the northwest quadrant that'll be impacted by the long-term improvements, not by the interim improvements. We've got property in the northeast quadrant that will be impacted. And those are the key impacts. Oh, and we will be closing Station Road in order to fit the interchange and closing it at Highway 15. In terms of our consultation efforts, we've had two public information centers, February of last year and February of this year. Those are the only public information centers we're planning on holding. The key comments that we've received to this point relate mostly to property impacts, environmental impacts, people that want to see road safety improvements. We had some questions about the Station Road closure. Some people are interested in cycling facilities. And we've had some questions about accommodation of long combination vehicles, which our long-term plans will accommodate. In terms of next steps, we expect to file our Transportation Environmental Study Report later this summer, complete the preliminary design this summer, and once there is environmental clearance for the study, the ministry will begin to protect property for the improvements. I think I made my ten minutes. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Counselor Allen.
Hi, and thank you. Thank you for the great presentation. Just, I have a few questions about each interchange. First of all, the Highway 38 improvements look like they'll be of great benefit, and this may be, I may, I may ask staff to comment on this, I guess. Is there any work being done with the carpool lot to have a transit facility there in conjunction with the city of Kingston? Any consideration to that in the design phase of this? We are trying to encourage rural residents to park and ride, and this is a great location for that sort of facility. Should I go one by one with my questions?
So, yeah, so I suppose the question for the delegation might be, is there accommodation for a transit facility of some kind?
I think the mayor got it. Have we?
So, I'm Tina White. I'm with the ministry. Currently, the transit portion of the city of Kingston was not interested in participating with the ministry with a transit park and ride when we asked, but that's always, there's always an opportunity to do that. And the design that you saw on the boards, and Brent can put that back if we need to. We could accommodate a park and ride similar to Montreal Street if the city was interested at that time. You have to remember that that's a long-term plan as well.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. My other question has to do with MacIver Road, where it meets. Do you anticipate additional use of MacIver Road? It seems it may become a shortcut across the city just because of the alignment with the exit. And I know at this stage, we have no capital plans to improve that road, but maybe we hadn't taken into account this.
We did in our traffic modeling include MacIver Road as part of that work, but most of the traffic demand is to the south, so we don't anticipate a lot of additional demand across MacIver Road.
Okay, great. If you'll permit me one more question, I just wanted to, the Highway 15 interchange seems to have some impacts on private property in a meaningful way. How have you managed to broach those conversations with respect to ensuring that the needs of the residents have been met?
So, the people who are impacted have been contacted by the ministry. We take into account any of their issues, and we continue to work with them. In terms of, if you're thinking of property acquisition, the ministry has a process for that, and that includes third-party appraisals, and there is a whole process set up so that it's a fair acquisition. And they also have rights under, there's numerous laws, expropriation acts, and so on. So we certainly are open with all property owners when we are looking to purchase property. I don't know if they've talked to you or not, but...
No, I'm just, I'm just looking out for them.
Yeah, for sure.
If they live in my district. So, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you. Just curious, will these two projects be getting done concurrently or consecutively? And what's the timeframe anticipated for both the intermediate and the long term?
So, long-term plans, we typically look at 20 years in the future so that we can protect property that far out, so that no development occurs where we want to build an interchange in the future. The interim improvements are currently not funded. Eastern Region, which is our region here, it is a priority to us, but it competes with all provincial jobs in the province for funding, and it currently is not funded.
Thank you. That's probably as good an answer as you can give, all considered. The other question I had, I know with both Montreal Street and Division, there was included in the, in the construction plans fencing and a way to mitigate against roadkill, both with turtles and, and other animals. Will that be part of this overall scheme as well whenever it gets built out?
So you mean the interchange jobs? Yeah, so there is the environmental component. When you go to the next phase called detailed design, they would look into, if there's new legislation to protect certain species, then that gets taken into consideration and built or put into a plan, into a contract at that time. So depending on what species is at risk, then we would mitigate that in whichever way we're asked to mitigate that through the various agencies.
Thank you.
Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. I believe it showed Station Road getting stocked up, and I was just wondering what the comments were from the residents and what your responses were to them, and, you know, your rationale.
Some people were supportive of Station Road being closed. Some people would prefer to see it open. Some people wanted to make sure that there were cycling facilities that could still go through onto Station Road. In terms of our responses as to why we needed to close it, it's simply in a, in a location beside that interchange ramp that is not going to be, it won't be safe to keep it open and operating. We did look at the possibility of moving it, but the terrain there is pretty rough, and there would be additional private property impacts. So we felt that the best, the best thing to do would be to cul-de-sac it there, and people could take Jackson Mills, or not Jackson Mills, Kingston Mills Road as an alternate route from Station Road.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions from council, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have one petition listed in the agenda. A petition bearing approximately 68 signatures was received by the mayor and chief administrative officer on April the 24th, 2015, and received in the city clerk's department on April 30th, 2015, and reads as follows. "We, the undersigned residents of Gresswood Lane and Ironwood Road, are requesting that the city of Kingston review and change its policy regarding street sweeping of rural roads, in particular, Gresswood Lane and Ironwood Road." And that has been referred to the president and CEO of Utilities Kingston. Are there any other petitions to present? Seeing none, we do have one motion of congratulations moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to the Kingston Waterfront Roadry Club, who celebrated their charter to become the fourth roadry club in Kingston on May 11th, 2015. Congratulations and all the best to this new energetic group of community-minded people volunteering and giving back in our community. So we will call the vote. And that carries. We have no deferred motions, so I will ask for report number 48 from the chief administrative officer.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor Turner, that report number 48 from the chief administrative officer consent be received and adopted.
So we have clauses A through G. Would anyone like any of the clauses separated? Counselor McLaren. So B has been separated. Okay, seeing no other hands, oh, Counselor Hutchison?
F.
Okay, so we will first call the vote on clauses A, C, D, E, and G. A is waiver of section 42 Expropriations Act for 546 Gardners Road. C is a word of contract, two split-stream rear-loading refuse packer trucks and one recycle truck. D is a word of contract, one ice resurfacer. E is request for exemption from signed bylaw, FOTEN on behalf of Great Oak Montessori Private School. And G is the 2015 Kids Perch Derby at Portsmouth Olympic Harbor waiver of fees and charges bylaw. And that carries. Item B is renewal of contract CGI Payroll Services Center Incorporated. Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. I have a small concern on this one. Actually, it's a large concern, but I understand that there is not much that can be done during the lifetime of this particular solution. However, I would like to suggest to staff that they consider the economic and the long-term cases for doing this through open-source software. I understand that the short-term case, it will cost a lot more to hire somebody to integrate the software, and we would only save a small amount, $30,000 or so, in not having licensing fees. But if you would, I ask you to consider the economic cost of this. Right now, we're trying to bring investment into the city. This is actually an investment in Markham. We are paying a Markham company $30,000 to help them develop. And part of the, part of the side of development is that we don't want to actually have a leaking boat. We would actually like to have the money stay in Kingston, circulate in Kingston, so that when we spend the tax dollars that we collect, this money then gets spent with a group of people in Kingston, who then spend it again in somebody else's restaurants or businesses in Kingston, and then they spend it in somebody else's restaurants and businesses in Kingston. And so we have expanding circles of positive economic influence. When we take money out of the community, we are taking that income away from all of these economic agents along the way. And certainly, in some cases, it's unavoidable. We just accepted a new ice resurfacer because clearly we don't have the investment ability to build a new ice resurfacer. But in this case, there are other opportunities. We have, there are open-source software out there that is free. It doesn't cost any licensing. It would cost us a new job, which is something that would help economic development, because this new person would live in Kingston and spend their money here, thereby helping to expand our economy. The point that I'm trying to suggest is that if you send the money out, you're doing the negative aspect of what we're trying to get KEDCO and all of us to do here, build our economy by having income coming in. If it's leaking out, it doesn't strike me as good economic sense. Also, so I realize on the short term, this doesn't make business sense, but in the long term, business sense, imagine if we were to hire somebody to integrate this into our system and then offer this out to other smaller institutions who cannot afford such a solution for a price that is below their total cost but above our marginal cost. We would be actually making money from this, a source of non-tax revenue sources that would actually put down or lower the need for raising taxes while increasing the services. We would be supporting our local businesses that need to hire. This particular one is a hiring software. And I'm sure there are lots of businesses out there that can't afford this but do need the services. So what I would like to do is to suggest to staff that at the end of this particular, the life of this particular solution, open-source software be considered, the possibility of having a permanent staff member to look into it and to expand the service to other institutions within Kingston, thereby keeping the money circulating in Kingston and helping our economy grow rather than another outside economy. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will call the vote. And that carries. Item F, a word of contract for construction services at Riverview Park and Friendship Park. Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. Both these parks are in Kingston District. And I've been, had a number of inquiries about them when we're proceeding, so I just, first of all, want to thank staff for doing the difficult work of rejigging this contract so that it could be affordable to the city and meet budget. And just before I came in here, I was told that all the amenities will be the same, so I'm sort of responding to people out there and through staff. Thank you. And that will proceed in the summer, this summer in 2015. And so I'm thankful for that. I just wanted to express that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 49 from the chief administrative officer.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Stroud, that report number 49 from the chief administrative officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So clause number one is the Queen's request for extension to temporary noise exemption West Campus Sports Fields and Richardson Stadium. Counselor Neal.
Yes, just a quick question to staff. It's my understanding that the south field, which has received some, but limited, but some complaints regarding that noise on the south field, is not part of this because it was our understanding all along that Queens would not be operating it outside of our existing noise bylaw from nine to nine. Is that correct?
Commissioner Hurdle.
I'm looking, looking in the wrong direction. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The south fields are not included in the request for exemption, and there are a couple of reasons for that. One is that they're not using any amplified sound. So noise in terms of kids screaming and playing soccer is allowed until nine o'clock. So that's not prohibited in our noise bylaw. So I want to make sure that's clear. So they're not proposing to use any amplified sound, and that's the request that they're making in terms of the other fields because of the amplified sound that they have. The other thing to also make sure that is clear for members of council is that the, you'll recall that the fields for which the exemption is requested actually had some upgrades to them. So they, they actually were turned into artificial turf fields, so the usage also increased with that. The south fields have not changed, and the lights have been there for years. And the use is still camps, practices for soccer, football. And to our knowledge, and based on the information that we have, and there was a description of the system earlier in terms of the complaints, the complaints have been coming from one residence for the south fields. So I, I want to make sure... So I, I want to make sure that it's clear in terms of the reason why those are separate and not, there's no request for an exemption for South Field.
Could I also request of staff, because from the delegation answering some questions that I asked, it appears that the lights are on beyond the nine o'clock end of that legal period when, when, when our existing noise bylaws are there. Can we seek some assurances from Queens that those lights won't be left on after nine o'clock? Because that would just be facilitating, I would think, the breach of our, of our noise bylaw.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do not have a bylaw that regulates lights in terms of time for light. So I, I want to make sure that we understand that we can't impose, we can't impose that the lights be turned off at nine o'clock, because we do not have a bylaw that provides us with the ability to do that. Our bylaw is there for noise, so the, the, if there are noise complaints after nine, and I think Queens has indicated that they've been, actually, we have seen the, the log in terms of monitoring those complaints and the measures that they've tried to take to respond to those complaints. I, I want to make sure that council understands as well that we, we are talking right now about fields that are used by Queens University and community partners. The city has a number of fields as well that are lit beyond nine o'clock. And again, we do not have a bylaw, so we have to, to also look at how we're using our own fields for the community. So if we start to restrict lights, which we do not have a bylaw to regulate, we might have to look at restricting, restricting lights in our, our community fields as well.
I guess that still, my concern remains the same, and that's that having lights on till 11 o'clock at night is facilitating the use of that field beyond the nine o'clock noise bylaw and is begging, therefore, for some issues with, with potential noise in that area. So I would look to Queens to perhaps, with a good neighbor policy, to say we won't have the lights on till 11 o'clock at night for continued sports in that field, so.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I think here we, here we stand a year after the first noise bylaw exemption request, and situation has changed, and I think there is a clear reason for that. There's clearly an improvement in the effort that the Queens Administration and Athletics Department is making on behalf of this file. And I, and I think that's, that's, I'm commending Queens for, for doing that, for showing that effort and doing all the right things and putting all the, the work into this. I personally am still in a position where I must advocate for the residents in my district that feel that they have been ignored in the past or that their concerns are not being properly addressed. And there's clearly a disconnect in what they're reporting through email, phone calls, and, and I even went to a meeting with them and heard some concerns face to face, to what they're saying and what Queens is reporting as far as complaints. Queens is, we've heard in the delegation tonight that they, they're painting a picture where, where everything's fairly good, there's a few complaints, and here they are, and here are the, the letters of complaint. And, and that's clearly not the picture that I'm getting from, from the people directly. And so I'm wondering what the reason for that disconnect is, but it's perhaps not actually something that we can directly blame the decisions that the Queens Administration has made for. That remains to be seen. However, in the interim, I feel obliged to continue to advocate on behalf of, of these residents on the, on the western edge of my district, because that's my job and because it's the right thing to do. And I'm, I'm still conflicted about this, because I, I understand why staff is recommending we continue with the exemption. I'm, I don't know. The, the question I asked about the amplified sound, I got an answer. I still don't understand, if it's true that the league has requirements about playing recorded music in between plays and so on, at a very high decimal level, then what, what was happening when I was in Queens bands and I was playing the tuba and that was good enough for the people of that time? It must be the same league. Have they changed the requirements? I mean, and if they have, then really the responsibility might lie up the food chain to the university league themselves, and maybe Queens should be advocating on behalf of the residents in the neighborhood to ask for an exemption to the league so that they can just play the band, the acoustic band, which is much quieter than the amplified sound. Just, just a suggestion. I think that until the residents of my district start telling me that everything's, that they feel like everything's been, on the Queen's side, has been properly dealt with, and they feel like their concerns have been adequately addressed, I, I must withhold my support for the recommendation. So I will be voting, reluctantly voting against it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. The fields actually are in the Portsmouth District, and I have a different series of events in that the major problem has been with the South Field, which actually isn't part of this exemption. Queens went out of its way to make sure that everyone who contacted me and I forwarded any information to Queens, that everyone has been invited to meetings to be able to discuss any problems they have. And from my point of view, the whole level of upset dropped dramatically with Queens' very serious involvement. So I can support another year of this noise exemption. It doesn't mean we're giving a blanket approval. We're saying another year as we all continue to work on this process of a very vital part of Queens and sports and community sports. This isn't just Queens, it's community sports in the heart of a city. The problem isn't going to go away. It's part of our city park problem when people don't like a lot of noise. We'll, we'll have to resolve it over the years, but I can certainly support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I will say that in, in my experience, these sorts of files are always very difficult because noise tends to be very subjective. You can have noise that is produced, and you can talk to five different residents. One resident can be very upset and very bothered by it, and the other four residents or homeowners are fine. That was something that I encountered a lot with the Power Place Center, which of course was a file that, that was difficult to deal with. It went on for a number of years for that exact reason. Half the neighborhood was completely fine with it, and there were others that were very concerned. So I think unfortunately, we may never get to a world of zero complaints. There may always be issues, and I think that that's why it's important to ask Queens to continue to respond and to try to address noise concerns as best they can. But I do think that the dramatic difference in the number of complaints that we are seeing now versus we saw a year ago is a huge, huge difference. It's very striking to me, and I think that if Queens has done everything that we've asked them to do, and clearly we're seeing those results, then I think it is important to reward that. Not to say that we're not going to continue to encourage that dialogue and work to, to minimize concerns as much as possible, but I'm certainly happy to support this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess picking up on what the mayor has suggested in terms of sensitivity to noise, I found this a difficult issue to, to come to a conclusion on for reasons that have already been expressed. I am certainly supportive and see that Queens has been doing a lot of good work to address the issues, and I, and I'm confident they would continue to do that. However, I do have to ask myself what my purpose is here and who I am speaking for and what, who should be spoken for if they're not speaking, and we're only seeing a handful of comments from the public. I don't interpret that as a lack of concern on the issue of noise. I think about who is most sensitive to noise, and I think about young families. I think about those who, who perhaps, let's say, have their windows open, can't afford air conditioning. There are all kinds of considerations as far as who is most disrupted by noise. And so for that reason, I'm going to vote against this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions, Counselor Hutchinson?
Just a couple of questions to staff. How many complaints have we received in the last year, May to May, regarding the North Field?
Ms. Leonard?
For the West Campus Fields, we've received no complaints at all for this noise exemption.
From, from North Orson?
The South Fields, we've heard from one residence.
Okay. And do you have any information?
Counselor Hutchinson, Commissioner Hurdle just wants to add.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add that the South Fields are not part of the exemption. So even if council does not endorse this extension to the exemption, it still doesn't address the South Field. So we need to make sure that it's clear that they're separated. So what we're saying is that we have received no complaints during the year for the fields for which Queens is requesting the extension to the exemption.
Does that make my question out of order?
Uh, no.
Okay. So my question is this. There was a claim that there was a great deal more use of the South Field after May 1st, 2014. Do we know anything? Does staff know anything about that? Whether that's accurate or not?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To our knowledge, the use on that field used to be children's summer camps, football practices, soccer practices. There's been, I believe, some frisbee as well, and that has continued to take place. So the type of use hasn't necessarily changed. And keep in mind, it is a natural grass field, so your usage can be limited depending on the weather, as we know. So that type of use hasn't changed in terms of, any amplified sound hasn't taken place on, on the South Fields.
No, no, I knew about the amplified sound. That was made perfectly clear. My, my question is simply whether the activities, the number of activities per week had increased markedly. That was the nature that I heard of the claim, and I'm just asking staff if they have any corroborating evidence to that effect.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have the actual number of activities. I think the representatives from Queens probably could have answered that question. But again, keep in mind that it is a natural turf field, and there is a limited amount of activity that you can put on a field without actually damaging it. So I, I'm not sure if the number has significantly increased, but I'm assuming that, like other fields, they have to be managed, and you have to limit the type of use and the number of occurrences on your natural turf field.
Thank you.
Counselor Cannon?
Thank you. Through you, Your Worship. I just wanted to mention that I will be supporting the motion, just based on the fact that it's a flourishing park in the downtown core. It, as we, if we look forward, to, to give an example, if we look forward 10 years in the future and we're going to do things like increase density of our downtown core, different parks that were very quiet a lot of the time may have increased traffic. So I think that as the city changes over time, increasing the usage of a field doesn't necessarily mean that that field is, there's problems with that field. And, and there's going to be, we're always going to be juggling and mitigating complaints with, with changes that take place in the city. And for me, this, what I've seen so far with the complaints that I've seen are not enough to, to sway my vote in the other direction.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. If we were to stop this and not allow it to go through tonight, won't that destroy some of the things that are going on in the city and prevent all these activities, which would be very harmful to our city as a whole? So that's my question to maybe Queens or staff, or I just can't imagine stopping this at this point.
So is there someone from staff that wants to respond to that? Ms. Leonard?
When Queens made their application last year for the noise exemption, the original one, it, they did relay that there would be a large impact on the community, on the events and the number of teams that participate at those fields. A lot of it was FCC soccer, different groups throughout the city, so, and schools. So yes, there would be an, an impact on the community.
Okay, and thank you. I have another question for you as well. You, you mentioned there was only one complaint at Richardson Stadium, and that's where the amplified sound would be. Is that correct?
We received no complaints at all as part of the original exemption, which was the Queens West Fields and Richardson Stadium. There were no complaints at all received.
Right, that's what I heard. Okay, thank you. So I will support this motion, and thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other questions, Counselor George?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you. I think it's, I'm going back to what Counselor Stroud said, and it, it didn't sit well with me, because he talked about, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he talked about Queens getting the exemption, they tried putting some mitigation in place. And I think he alluded to the fact that he would like to see them do more, but he wouldn't support this motion. But you can't, if you don't support this motion, you're not giving them the opportunity to, to do more, to prove that they can further mitigate some of the issues that obviously Counselor Stroud and potentially some other councils are hearing about. I haven't savven accept. I did, actually, I was copied in on a couple, but we were all copied in on one tonight. Some residents on Oak Ridge were very supportive of what's been going on and, and what Queens has been doing. And so I think in order to, to properly give them the opportunity to prove themselves out that they can do the job, I can certainly support giving them one more year. But, you know, if there are any complaints whatsoever, and we've heard that there have been no complaints at least brought to the attention of our staff, where in fact, bylaw could have stepped in and dealt with it, and they would have received a fine or whatever the case is, that hasn't happened, which surprises me, because if they were that serious, I know if I, I still resided in that area, and I did, I grew up in that area and listened to Queens football and so on on the weekends with my grandparents, and was never bothered for us. But it's, it's just that I think we, we need to give them a chance and, and let the residents know that if it is a serious issue, then to make sure that they do contact bylaw rather than going through council, because we don't pass it on to bylaw, but allow them to make that complaint, and then we can better judge whether they are doing the job that they say they're going to do and have been doing, and we can assess it in a year's time. So I, I would encourage council to support this so that we can properly have a more objective view in a year's time as to whether in fact they have put in the proper mitigation things to, to deal with what the current members of, of the residents in that area have been expressing to Counselor Stroud and others.
Thank you. So with that, we will call the vote. Please vote now. And that carries by a vote of nine to two. Item two is the allocation of provincial community homelessness prevention initiative funds and funds from the Homelessness Plan Implementation Reserve. So we'll give Counselor Cannon a chance to step back. Are there any questions? Counselor Hutchinson?
I just wanted to make a comment. That's okay, right? That, that I'm quite happy with this report in terms of the homelessness initiative. It does point out the staff It does point out that staff has done quite a bit of work to try and fill the gaps that come with trying to put in a rather difficult program. And hopefully in time, this will result in savings. But I'm, I've always been one who thinks the savings are going to go primarily to the province, but not to the municipality. Sometimes, well, too often that's what happens. I see the mayor laughing, ironically, I think. The, one thing I did want to point out is that staff is giving us, to council and the public, I suppose, a bit of a warning here. They're usually pretty subtle. And one is that, that on the bottom of page 123 says, "It will take some time to fully evaluate whether these new programs require more resources to be devoted to them in the short term and potentially longer term to ensure success." And then again, it says on, regarding youth in particular, "It's anticipated that funding for further enhancement may be required to ramp up the system and ensure the best outcomes for youth." So I just want people to note, council to note, that they may well be back because this is a particularly difficult program to make work well. And they're telling us they may need more funding. And we don't know, well, we know now that the province is going forward for a number of years, but, well, let's see, two years, I think. And, but after that, we don't. So I just wanted to thank staff again, and also to the members of the housing, the housing and homelessness committees over the last few years, who did point out almost from the beginning that more funding would be needed. And sure enough, thankfully, the province has provided it, as well as the city to some smaller extent. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. Just a question for staff regarding communication of the Housing First model. There's, I know that there's quite a bit in here about how the funds will be used in terms of enhancing capacity and training of staff. Will there be a dedicated allocation to communicating to potential clients the changes in the strategy and where to go for assistance?
Mr. Leibman.
Through you, your worship. That is definitely a component. I don't think we foresee that as a large financial component, but it's a large component that we're working with our communications department to work on as we initiate this process. We've just started a lot of these programs, so we haven't concentrated on that yet. But as it ramps up in July, which is the next stage, I think we feel like that's when we'll be trying to advertise, for lack of a better word, with clients better as to what services are available.
Thank you.
Okay. We will call the vote. Item three is options to not permit a casino gaming facility in Kingston. Counsel Shell has stepped away. We will call the vote. And that carries. Item four is the Kingston Algonquin Limestone Partnership Table. Just to note that there are three blanks in the recommendation that need to be filled with three names. So are there any volunteers? Counsel McLaren, Counsel Neil, Counsel Huchison? Is there anybody else that wishes to be considered? We can do a vote. So that works out perfectly. So, Mr. Clerk, did we get those names recorded?
McLaren, Neil, and Huchison.
Okay, great. So we will call the vote on the recommendation. And that carries. Report number 50 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number 50 from the Planning Committee and ask that it be received and adopted. Thank you.
Moved by Counsel Shell, seconded by Counsel George. That report number 50 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So we will separate item three, as Counsel George has indicated, he has a potential pecuniary interest. So seeing no other separations, we will first call the vote then on items one and two. Number one is a application for official plan amendment zoning bylaw amendment and to provide comment to the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry for an Aggregate Resource Act application, 3501 Pine Grove Road. And item two is an application for official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment, 1315 and 17 Grain Street, currently addressed as 662 King Street West. So we will call the vote. That carries. So item three is an application for final plan of condominium, 326 Baggett Street. And that carries. Report number 51 from the Municipal Heritage Committee.
Thank you, your worship. It is my great pleasure, especially seeing as the Heritage Conservation District got through its 30-day period without appeal, to have the report number 51 from the Municipal Heritage Committee received and adopted. Thank you.
Moved by Counsel Stroud, seconded by Counsel Shell. That report number 51 from the Municipal Heritage Committee be received and adopted.
So there are six clauses. Counsel Shell?
Thank you. Mayor Patterson, I neglected a disclosure of pecuniary interest regarding clause five, Municipal Heritage Committee 653, 655, King Street West, heritage property grant application as the owner is a client. So I will not be voting on this one. Thank you.
Okay. So if there are no other separations, we'll first call the vote on items one, two, three, four, and six. And that carries. And now we will call the vote then on number five, application for heritage property grant, 653 to 655, King Street West. And that carries. Report number 52 from the Rural Advisory Committee.
Thank you, your worship. It's my pleasure to present report 52 from the Rural Advisory Committee and that it be received and adopted.
Moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counsel George. That report number 52 from the Rural Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. Counsel Neil?
If, if I could speak to number one?
Okay. So we will separate number one. And seeing no other separations, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll deal with item one first, and then we'll deal with item two and three combined. So Counsel Neil, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I did contact both of our representatives on this committee, just to give them a heads up. Because this is an issue that is pertinent to EITP, I requested, and both Counsel Allen and Counsel Bohm said they would not have any issues if I were to amend this so that it says that this report be shared as an information report to EITP.
So there's a motion to amend that's been put forward by Counsel Neil. Has that been submitted to the clerk?
It has not. It was an oversight on my behalf.
Do you, do you have it in writing?
I will put it in writing if you want to go on to two and three. I know. Give me.
Counsel Neil, you know the rules.
I do. And it'll take 30 seconds to do. So you can move on.
Simply because we do have two other items that we can do, please write quickly. So we will call the vote first on items two and three, roadside brushing on rural roads and rural road audit assessment process. We will call the vote. So number one, we do have a motion to amend. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel Allen. So given the nature of the amendment, Mr. Clerk, could you just read it out again? And if nobody has any concerns, then I think we can, can we just call the vote without taking the time to put it up on the screen?
Sure. We could do that. So just that the, to include the words, and that this report be shared with, as information only to the EITP Committee.
So is everyone okay? Everyone understands what that amendment is? Okay. So we'll call the vote on the motion to amend. And that carries. On the motion as amended? And that carries. Report number 53 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
I'm hap, I am happy to submit report number 53 of EITP, duly moved and seconded.
Moved by Counsel Neil, seconded by Counsel Allen. That report number 53 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause. Just note the time sensitivity, which is, I believe, is why it's come forward tonight. Seeing no comment or questions, we'll call the vote. And that carries. So on to information reports. We have two, tender and contract awards, subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of March 2015, and first quarter operating budget status report for 2015. Seeing no questions, we have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, motion number one, that the resignation of Mr. Wayne Warden from the Memorial Centre Advisory Committee be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counsel Shell, seconded by Counsel Neil. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Number two, that is requested by the Ontario Senior Secretariat, Council proclaimed June 2015 as seniors' month in the city of Kingston. Moved by Counsel Ossanik, seconded by Counsel Allen. We'll give an honorable mention to Counsel Neil as the only senior on council. And that carries. Okay. On to new motions. We have one new motion, moved by Counsel Stroud, seconded by Counsel Neil. Whereas the KNP Trail has been a very popular and successful project that has seen wide support from both the city of Kingston and its neighbors, and whereas there now exists a nationwide effort to connect the entire Trans-Canada Trail in time for our nation's sesquicentennial in 2017, and this national trail network already incorporates the Cataracway Trail, which now connects to the rural section of the KNP Trail, and whereas the original KNP Railroad connected with downtown Kingston, and consensus always has existed to do the same with the KNP Trail, and whereas staff has already begun work on the plan to finish the urban section of the trail with an unspecified timeline, as reported to EITP in February 2015, and whereas multi-use pathways allow for enjoyment by a number of different active transportation modes and recreational uses, and are very cheap to build relative to roads for heavy vehicle traffic, and whereas the trail was identified in the 2007-2010 strategic priorities, and this council has stated recently in its own strategic priorities that it would like to encourage both active transportation and an enhancement of our trail network, including a specific priority to indeed finish the KNP Trail by 2017, and whereas there is a current work plan mentioned by the CAO, which is intended to address this council's strategic priorities for 2015 to 2018, therefore be resolved that staff prepare options for the creation of a detailed work plan, including necessary time-sensitive steps, cost estimates, and all possible route segment options that would allow the work to be completed in time for a trail opening on July 1st, 2017, and report to EITP by the end of Q3, 2015. Counsel Stroud, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. All right. So just to start out, just definitions, in case any of you didn't go to Queens in the Sesquicentennial of the year, like I did. That means 150th anniversary, Sesquicentennial, like centennial, Sesquicentennial, anyway. Just so that's clear, that's where Canada is coming up. We're at 148 years old right now as a country. At 50, it was the middle of the First World War, 1917. At 100, 1967, we created a new flag, which is Canadian flag, in which we're celebrating the 50th anniversary of, in the same year, in 2017. And so now there's a Trans-Canada Trail, which is an attempt to, one of the many attempts to celebrate the Sesquicentennial with this coast-to-coast trail network. And we have a chance to be part of it if, because we connect to the, to the Trans-Canada Trail via the KNP, but it doesn't connect to downtown Kingston. So that's always been in the strategic priorities. So the question is really not if we want to do this, but the question is when. And unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond our control, the history of the country, and we don't have a choice on the date. The date is July 1st, 2017, whether we like it or not. The question is, what can we do by that date that we haven't already done? So in, so to follow up on the report that we received in February at EITP and the questions around that, it became clear that there was no specified timeline and no identified next steps that would indicate there would be anything happening on this file in the next couple of years. So, so what, so I went to staff after I wrote this motion, and I met with Commissioner Hurdle and Neil Unsworth last Wednesday. Commissioner, Counselor, sorry, I called you Commissioner. Counselor Neil was there as well. So we asked some questions and discussed preliminary things and the intent of the motion and so on. And we clarified some assumptions regarding what this motion is addressing. It's really just the timeline of an already existing project. So, but there are questions because staff, you know, they do need direction on this. So we did clarify that we wanted to be practical, and that we should probably consider alternate routes. So that's why, that's in the clause there. And whether or not it's the historically accurate route of the KNP Railroad or not, I thought, and Counsel Neil agreed, that we shouldn't be looking at options because not every route is going to be doable in timeframe. And, and, you know, we need to make an effort. So another thing that we discussed was whether on-road sections of the trail were an option, and we agreed that all, everything should be included in the report. Again, this is just a report that we're asking for so that we can make the decision down the road. This isn't making any decision about the trail tonight. I think if we, if we're serious about making any decision, we need to have the report. And I guess I could ask a question of Commissioner Hurdle right now. In the, in the case where there's some tricky parts that are, that are hard to get through to connect the trail together, I believe Mr. Unsworth mentioned the option of stopping the trail and having an the trail and having an interrupted section of, where the trail doesn't connect. Could you just sort of give a bit more information on how that would work?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr Mayor. So one of the things that we can look at, recognizing that obviously with the KNP Trail, we do require some land to be acquired, but one of the things that we can look at are sections where the KNP Trail could be built as planned, as per the original plan, and then section where we may or may not have access to the land, we could actually stop there and redirect people on road for a section of the trail, if you wish, and then get them back connected on the, the KNP Trail. So we will be bringing back options that we think are feasible for 2017, recognizing the timeframe is pretty short, and that will include some on-road sections for the trail. There, there's no other way to get around it. And we will also be bringing some cost estimates related to the construction of this trail. And, and I, I do want to stress that those cost estimates are not going to be two hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. We're going to be talking about millions of dollars. To give you an idea, the section we're doing this year for the KNP Trail from Division to Dalton is about three hundred thousand dollars. So if you're thinking of a much longer section, we're going to be, the numbers are going to be much higher. So I do want to make sure that council is aware of that and prepared for that as well.
Thank you, and that's true. And Ms Unsworth also mentioned the idea of sticker shock, which is in play here when you actually see the price tag. We're talking about seeing a menu, right? Menu of what the options are to do something on this trail in time for the sesquicentennial. We need to see the menu to make some decisions. If we're asking for the menu to be ready for Q3, that's when we would have the debate about what to do. So I think we need this, this report, and I encourage your support, and I'm happy to hear any comments tonight about the implications of this, of this request, but please try to keep your comments on topic to the KNP specifically, because we know that there are other topics that may seem related that could take a lot more time to discuss, and I hope the Chair understands what I'm talking about. So thanks, that's all saved for now, but I do reserve the right to speak last. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you councillor Stroud for plugging just the importance of speaking to the topic at hand. That was wonderful. Deputy Mayor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. So I commend councillor Stroud on, also on his plug for the upcoming commemoration strategy that we'll be seeing in, in this summer, I suppose. And the rationale for completion of the trail by 2017, I think, is a really good one. Think also, though, just not to lose sight of the fact that, as mentioned, this is, this is something that we have put forward as a strategic objective of the city, and for good reason, because providing this sort of trail will be linking neighborhoods, will be providing access to community, educational, and economic opportunities that will change lives in the city. And I'd also just like to point out that when that time comes on July 1st, 2017, I hope that Mary Farrar feels the, the joy and the accomplishment that she should for such a, such a long-term commitment to this cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neil?
Thank you. I was very, very happy to second this motion. I think it reflects both, this was a council priority in 2006, council, and again, it was identified as a priority for our consideration in this, in this council year. I think it, it's time for us to do something that allows us to get on the map as far as trail and recreational cycling tourism goes. And when the Canadian Trail is completed, would be a shame if there wasn't a recommended link to downtown Kingston, because the reality is that there will be substantial tourists over the years that will be riding the trail. And to be able to join downtown Kingston in a sensible, accessible way is really, really important. So I totally support this. We had a good conversation with staff, so I think I'm looking forward to the report coming forward. Could I just, I believe it would be a friendly amendment, in the second last whereas clause, it says was identified in the 2007-2010 strategic priorities? I believe that's 2006 to 2010 was the term of council. I'm looking to a councillor from that period, that, so.
So we, we could do an amendment if you really feel that that's really important for the motion. I, I suppose that, well, I don't want to speak to the motion to amend.
Yeah, it, it isn't important, it is accurate.
Mr Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so councillor Neil has put forward a motion to amend the second last whereas clause to change 2007 to 2006. Is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Hutcheson? Okay, is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor George? Okay. So this is only to the amendment, so unless you've got a really good reason why, you know, you think that the year is wrong, then there really isn't a whole lot to say. Councillor George?
Thank you, through your worship. It actually should be the council of 2004. The election took place in the fall of 2003, and it was, and in 2004, we had the seven projects, of which this was one. So it would be the council of 2004 through to the end of 2007. So could we amend that to be 2004 council? Because it isn't the 2006. 2006 was an election year. I was there from 2004 to 2006, and this was one of our seven priorities.
Okay, well, I know that this is, this is a critical debate that we have going on right now, so I know that we need to spend lots of time on this, but I do think procedurally that what you would need to do is vote against the motion to amend and then put forward another motion to amend if you see so fit, so I'll leave, I'll leave that choice up to people around the horseshoe. Councillor Hutcheson, did you want to speak to the motion to amend?
My point was exactly the same.
Okay, thank you.
As councillor George's.
Anybody else on the motion to amend? Yes, councillor Stroud?
I'm not sure the procedure on this, but it would be a friendly amendment if I just took out the dates and put previous council strategic priorities.
That, that might, that might be simplest. We do have a motion to amend, so unless that motion is withdrawn by the mover, we will have to call the vote, so.
Withdrawn? I did not mean to take this much time.
Okay, so councillor Neil has withdrawn.
A typo.
Councillor Neil has withdrawn the motion to amend. You still have the floor, councillor Neil, if you want to put forward anything else? No? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion? Councillor Allen?
Thank you, your worship. I, I look forward to, to seeing the work plan for this and some of the options. It is a connection to the rural area and an important connection in terms of recreation and making sure that we have a great interaction between the city of Kingston, the urban area of the city of Kingston, and the rural area of the city of Kingston. I do, I will be critical, though, of the costs that we put into this, and that's simply because the Trans-Canada Trail is some distance from the heart of Kingston, and we do have a waterfront trail that does see a fair amount of cycling along it as well, and it goes right through the city of Kingston. It's a bike route, and it follows, it's not, it follows roads and trails across the, but across the waterfront, and I just want to flag that it's an important tourist trail as well, and it's, and it may see even in our sesquicent, I can't say it, sesquicentennial, sesquicentennial year, we still may see more tourists following that route through Prince Edward County into Kingston along the waterfront. And so I just want to flag that for council, but I will support this motion for this, this report to be done so that we can determine what our options are.
Thank you. Councillor Hutcheson?
Thank you, your worship. Just wanted to say that the most, most of the approbation, the praise for this, for the KNP Trail lies with Doug Knapp and the KNP Trail Association, who started producing, pursuing this at least twenty-three years ago, and I have been on the wrong side of a number of phone calls about why we haven't completed it. And there's not much you can say, really, other than the usual that we have land access and acquisition issues. So following what staff said, I'm sure they'll make every effort to move the trail along with, with some kind of reasonable cost structure, and we'll use roads where we have to for the time being, but hopefully we will finish it someday. So it truly is a trail that leads from the Trans-Canada down into the, down into the centre of the city, and will be a tourist attraction, I'm sure, as well as the use for, for Kingstonians, not only for recreational purposes, but in other cities where you see this, it's also used for employment, transportation. So it's, it has more than, it has a number of significant potential uses as once, once it's completed. So I'm glad to support this, and we'll have a bigger decision later, but we have to get the, move the yardsticks here, and so this is the way to do it. And we did make it one of our priorities, as have another, other councillors, councils, and I won't mention any years, so I'll be glad to support this. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I just want to comment on, on something that a few councillors have said tonight, is that, well, we've made the KNP Trail a strategic priority, therefore I will vote in favor of this motion. I am a little bit concerned that we don't start bringing forward motions, directing staff to implement particular strategic plans or action items that we've agreed to. And the reason for that is that there are about fifty, right? Of all the strategic priorities and all the action items, all, under all of them, if we were to start to pass motions telling staff to, now we want to work on this one, now we want to work on that one, things could get at a hand pretty quickly. I think it really is important that we understand that what we've done is we've passed an overall strategic plan, and now we're asking staff to go away and formulate a work plan that can put all of those items into one package. And I think to be fair, we need to let staff go and do that work, and then bring those items forward one by one as, as, in a manner that's sensible and makes sense from, from their perspective. My understanding of this motion is that the reason why this has come forward is because this one action item is unique in that it's the only one that specified a particular timing. So if that wasn't the case, I wouldn't be able to support this. But my understanding, talking to the mover, is that this is really directed to, we just want to make sure that we can hit this July 1st, 2017. What are the options? What are the costs that would be involved in doing that? So we're asking staff for information. At the end of the day, we need to evaluate that information. We need to see what those options are. There might be a number of options, and, and we need to make a practical decision, understanding that the other strategic priority that we've passed is not just the completion of the KNP Trail, but a lot of other pathways and trails throughout the city. And I think councillor Ossanik put that one forward, which I think was important. So we may need to make some choices, in the sense that if we put all of our money into one trail, that might mean we have to say no to some other trails. So there could be some difficult decisions coming down the road, but again, I think that this is the right approach, getting that information from staff ahead of time. So I just want to throw that out. Happy to support the motion based on what I believe is the intent for it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak that has not spoken? Councillor Stroud, you can speak last.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you so much for that, voicing your support for this. I, I did seek you out on this to clarify the intent of the motion, and I see that, that I was heard, and I appreciate that. Just in summary, I think we've got a good handle of what we're saying here. On Twitter, there were comments, a couple of comments, people asking, well, what does this mean about this other trail, or what does this mean? This is not meant to block any other trail or prioritize or anything like that, other than the stated goal in it to, to have it connect to the Trans-Canada Trail by July 1st. It's the only reason that it's sort of separated, and, 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 you know, we'll be making the decision about what to do later on, and look forward to that if this passes. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote. And that carries unanimously. Are there any notices of motion tonight? Minutes? Mr Clerk?
Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Turner, that the minutes of city council meeting number 2015-14, held Tuesday, May 5th, 2015, be confirmed.
So we will call the vote. And that carries. Are no tabling of documents? We have a number of communications. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Shell, that bylaws one through eight be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by councillor Ossanik, seconded by councillor Hutcheson, that bylaws one through four and eight be given their third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Camden. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.